... Board of Education, it's Tuesday, June 10. Board members have a copy of the agenda in front of them. We'll first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, the approval of the agenda. And I, as I understand it, we do have an amendment or a change?
Just a request that under the consent agenda items, we would move the expenditure item number two out from consent items into a separate line. There are some expenditures to the YMCA in that one, so I'd like to have that moved out if possible, and so I can vote on the rest of the consent agenda items.
Okay, so we would move the expenditures under consent items and possibly retitle that as item 11B, and then move the other items, the Rivercrest Facility Utilization Agreement C, Ratification of the Custodial Contract D. Board members agreeable to that? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I've moved for approval of the agenda as amended.
We have a motion by Mark, a second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motions approved. Next item is the Gateway Donation, and we also have Scott here with the union, so I believe we're gonna stand up front so May can get a picture. Scott, you want to come on down?
Scott, you gotta come around and up.
Education Association for their donation of $500. Okay. We'll move on to student-staff community recognition. Sandy?
The first recognition we'd like to share this evening is last month, I'm sure you recall, we had the high school Destination Imagination team here as they were on their way to global competition, and we are very excited to report that they placed first. First place in global competition overpowering Singapore is kind of the way the article goes. And the members of the team were David Schoberg, Ashley Aninson, Sidney Milanofi, Josh Coquerty, Emily Kepelis, and Adam Salon. And we want to congratulate that team for just their outstanding efforts. This is the third time in their careers that they have taken first place. So that's quite an accomplishment.
Thank you, very.
Next, we'd like to recognize our spring athletics, and we'll start, we have Mr. Hilding, John Hilding here, coach of the tennis team, with two of our young men who went to state. And let's see if I can remember, John Dahl and Josh Zeiman, and he'll give us a little summary of the team's success, tennis team's success, and...
In here?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. We had another good tennis season, and it was highlighted by the play of these two gentlemen, that's Josh Zeiman there and John Dahl. Josh and John played doubles for us, and they were first-team all-conference. They went to the sectional meet, placed third, and earned a state tournament bid. And so they went down to the state tournament and performed very, very well. I also want to say that not only are they great tennis players, but they're extraordinary students. John served as captain of our tennis team this spring, and Josh is regularly on the honor rolls. And so congratulations to both these guys.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Mr. Hilding, and Josh and John. Good job.
And then we'd also like to recognize the accomplishments of our track team this spring. And with us tonight, I see both, we have both coaches, Tom Klett and Don Krupa with us.
Hello, everyone. I'm kind of losing my voice, so you have to bear with me. The boys' track team, we ended up, we were second in conference this year. We took five individuals down to state. We had three individuals, John Roberts, Adam Zeiss, and Neil Kevie in the 3200, John Roberts in the 1600, Mike Lugatus in the discus, and Brody Swenson in the high jump. Nobody got on the box, but just about all of them PR'd and had their personal best. We had a great track season, 155 kids total, boys and girls. Just a great group of kids, and look forward to a great season next year.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the girls' track team. I have Rachel Zachar, who ran the 3200 for us at state meet, and she's only a sophomore, so she's got two years left. And it was a great honor to bring her down there because she had to run a personal best to get to state, and she improved that record also, her own record at state meet. And we had 15 girls that advanced in state competition. They did not only stand for and represent the rest of their teammates in lacrosse, but also did a tremendous job representing Hudson High School. These girls truly optimize that it means, what it means to set high standards and goals, and then to work hard both in and out of their season to meet them. The girls embody all parts of athletics in their camaraderie, sportsmanship, and drive to reach their goals. And thank you once again on behalf of the Hudson Girls Track and Field Team. And this is a comment from Coach Holm because she was not able to be here today. And Katie Cumming was another girl that was there last year and placed first in the 32, and also again this year in the 32. She had a misfortune in the 1600. With 500 meters to go, someone stepped on the back of her heel and pulled her shoe partway off, and she had to make a decision, either run with the shoe partway on or to kick it off and run barefoot. And she decided to kick it off, and she just couldn't get the power that she needed to excel, and she ended up finishing 11th. But she did win the 32 the night before, and Rachel was on that 32 with the rest of the team. We had, let's see, Hillary Fireisen was there last year too in the pole vault, and she placed third again this year. She was second last year and third this year in the pole vault. So she again did a good job. Sidney Milanofi in the 300 hurdles, she was sixth and got to stand on the podium. And besides the seniors that graduated, we have a tremendous team coming back next year, and we hope to be down there again and represent Hudson. So thank you very much for allowing us to come here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Don. Thank you, coaches, and congratulations, Rachel, and the other student athletes. Thanks again.
And then our final recognition. Our final recognition is with the middle school, our students in the business class that annually compete in the stock market game. And we had two teams, one took sixth and one took seventh this year in that national competition. So we're very pleased to also report that.
Very good.
Sandy, are any of those middle schoolers available for personal services?
We can check.
Congratulations to them as well. We'll move on to agenda item Nick, six, comments to Board of Education from, looks like a list of students. We'll start with Brandon Crockett. Brandon, if you could step before the microphone, and if you could state your name, please, again.
How y'all doing? I'm Brandon Crockett. I participated in the vandal acts of last year, June 3, 2007, just over a year ago. You know, bottom line, you guys, I'm sorry for that whole thing. Since day one, I've been, you know, embarrassed. And I knew it was wrong when we did it, and I knew it was wrong afterwards. You know, I wish I could take it back. I can't. You just have to learn from your mistakes, and I think that's the most important part. We all make mistakes. I'm not saying it was right by any means. And I mean, I think we're all taking responsibility for what we did, and I would just like to apologize to every one of y'all for having to put up with it. It's something that you shouldn't have to put up with, and, I mean, again, life-changing lesson. And, you know, I just want to say I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Nick Filipiak?
Hello, my name's Nick Filipiak, and I'm sure you guys know, a year ago, I participated in a crime that should never happened. And I realized the damage that it caused the school and my community, my friends, and my family. And again, I am terribly sorry for what I did. On the last note, I just want to say that you won't see me in the criminal records again, and I am terribly sorry for what I have done. I appreciate you hearing us out today, and I, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Nate?
Hi, I'm Nate Kovac, and I'd like to apologize for the incident that took place on June 3, 2007. I know, I realize now that this went way beyond a senior prank, and that it hurt and was very disrespectful to more people than I thought it would be. I'd also like to apologize for all the trouble that you guys went through, through this incident. You guys shouldn't have had to go through that. I hope sometime in the future you guys can forgive us for this incident that took place and for the disrespectful actions that we did. I know this hurt the pride and respect of all the schools that were involved, including ours the most, and I hope that the underclassmen can learn from our mistakes and that this doesn't happen again. It didn't seem like, at the first time, but these were more hurtful than we all intended it would to be when we first planned this and that we intended. But we have all grown through this and learned a lot from it, and we all wish we could go back and take it back, but we can't. But I would just like to apologize for our actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Peter?
It's not for Pete.
Okay. Peter's not here. Peter Mackey. Andrew Olson?
My name's Andy Olson. I would just like to apologize for my actions. I was involved in the vandalism. I was not thinking when I decided to go. I've learned from it now, taking responsibility for it, and need to own up to my mistake. And I also know now that I have to earn back the trust of everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael Peruka?
I'm Michael Peruka. I just want to apologize to all you for my actions with everyone else for the vandalism, and for putting the embarrassment on you people, the school, and my family. And I just hope that you can all accept my apology from the bottom of my heart and can all move on from this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Jacob Walczak?
Hey. I'd like to apologize to the school board for the unnecessary and negative attention that was drawn to you guys and the Hudson, the whole school district. I realize that what we did was completely unacceptable. I hope you can see that we're taking responsibility, and we're trying to learn from the mistakes that we made. And once again, I'm sorry for the embarrassment we caused. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jake. Sam Wegleitner?
Hi, I'm Sam Wegleitner, and I was also involved in the vandalism. And I just want to apologize for all the, just, I mean, the damage, the time, just all the hurtful feelings and all the distress in the community that were caused. And I would like to apologize for my lack of leadership to step up and say that this is a wrong thing and that this should not have taken place, whereas it could have just been as easy as just one kid to say, hey, what are we thinking, guys? And I think I should have done that. I just want to say I'm sorry, and it's really heartfelt, and thanks for your time.
Okay. Thank you, students. And, you know, as you know, it did cause some hardship for the school district as well as community. But I think over the course of the past year, it sounds as if each one of you has learned an important lesson. And that's the key, key piece in all of this, is that, you know, mistakes do happen, but the important part of it is to make sure that we all learn from it, and it sounds like you've done that. So I do appreciate you coming before the board, and we certainly wish you the best of luck, whatever you may be doing right now. Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, the agenda approval of the May 13, 2008 Regular and Closed Session Board of Education Meeting Minutes.
I would move approval, Mr. President, of the May 13, 2008 Regular and Closed Session Board of Education Meeting Minutes.
We have a motion by Tom, a second by Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motions approved. Correspondents, I believe we do have some correspondence?
We have one piece of correspondence from Diane Carter, retiring teacher, who just wants to acknowledge the recognition that she received at the, at the recognition banquet on her retirement, and the plaque received. And so it was a nice note from Diane Carter.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We'll move on to the superintendent report. Mary?
Each, each month I've been reporting on the sustainability features of Rivercrest and focusing on particular ones. This month, I'm going to focus on water efficiency and indoor air quality. Water efficiency has been very interesting to the people who have been on tour, board members as well, particularly when you're looking at the fixtures in the restroom. And this is new for many of us, dual flush valves and waterless urinals in each of the restroom facilities. And this will be something that our, both our students and staff are going to learn about. These kind of fixtures save water. In fact, we anticipate savings in the excess of 40% of saving of water, which is very significant, obviously. We also have low-flow lavatory faucets in each of the restrooms as well. So that helps with our water efficiency in preserving or conserving our natural resources. As far as indoor air quality, that has been a major focus at Rivercrest. And so the indoor air quality has been a high priority. This is achieved with a combination of measures including low or no volatile organic compounds, also known as VOCs. And they look for products that have specific adhesives, paints, flooring systems, and carpeting and furniture that have these qualities. Also composite wood and agri fiber products that do not use formaldehyde are specified. Care is taken to provide indoor air in amounts that meet LEED requirements that we've talked about before, and carbon dioxide levels will be constantly monitored to make sure that the air is of high quality. Classrooms, as you know, have 100% outside air provided, and classrooms, offices, and other areas will have the option of using natural ventilation because of the windows that are operable in many places in the building. Air quality will also be maintained over time because of the cleaning program that we will be using. We'll be using green products, and this is something we are trying out at Rivercrest to identify which products are the most effective in cleaning for us so that we can expand those to the rest of the district. So we'll be starting with Rivercrest. During construction, air quality was also maintained by preventing contamination of absorbative materials such as insulation, carpeting, ceiling tile, gypsum wallboard for moisture damage. So that was another important characteristic that happened during construction. And this is something that I didn't know initially, the use of diesel fuel, forklifts, and other construction tools was restricted. Prior to occupancy, there will be a building flush-out or the air will be tested for contamination levels. So again, we will be monitoring levels throughout. We've been doing that throughout the construction, and we'll continue to do that as the building starts into operation. And lastly, facility cleaning and maintenance areas have isolated exhaust systems to make sure we get rid of contaminants in those areas specifically that are used. And, Mr. President, if I then can move on to preparation for opening Rivercrest, I'm pleased to really announce that we're on schedule. In fact, our timeline, as I've said before, to build Rivercrest and construct it was not lengthy, it was a short timeline. And we really have our construction managers to thank for their good management of this project, and certainly Jim Stayskow from our own staff, who has been on site and represented us well. Tim Erickson has also worked on this. But the building is underway and will open on time. In fact, we're going to move in sooner than we have in some of our previous buildings. Usually when you construct a new school, you're right down to the wire of opening classrooms, and you're still moving in. We don't plan to do that at Rivercrest. If we are, it will be very minimal. And so some of the dates that I'm going to share with you are really representative of that. We have been working since construction started, or even before that, with a team of people who have been managing different aspects of the preparation procedure. Pat Hodges, certainly principal, Nancy Sweet, Sandy Kovac, Barbara Poon, Tim Erickson, Peg Shoemaker, Jim Stayskow, and Tracy Havishalene. And so the, the things that you're going to hear about are the results of their efforts working all year long. We had a list that was much larger than this piece of paper, and now it's down to just these things. Grade-level materials are currently in the district that have no, are no longer needed in their particular school, have been identified and will be moved to Rivercrest and to the other schools as well. You know, since we've shifted our population, there are some changes throughout the district. So we're using the curriculum materials that we currently have first before we buy new curriculum materials. Curriculum orders have been submitted by Sandy, and we're also monitoring closely the grade-level sections throughout the district. We may bring some additional requests for teaching staff to you in July, as we had told you before, for enrollment increases. The media center order has been submitted, so we're underway for that, and we have places identified when those orders come in where they can be stored. Boxes for packing have been in schools since, in May, and so teachers have been working diligently, saw some more there today continuing to pack. Communication to staff about what will be moved and staging sequence for moving materials has already occurred. And that's not just Rivercrest, that's building to building at the elementary level. So Jim Stayskow and his crew have really put together a good orchestration of that plan. The plan for the office at Rivercrest to move in is mid-July. Registration for Rivercrest, though, will be maintained at Willa River Office because we don't have the occupancy certificate that we need for people outside to come in, the public to come in at that time. So it's, will remain at Willa River for the rest of the summer, most of the summer. There will be two furniture moves. The first one starts July 21 for grade levels one through five. And then the second one is August 4, the remainder of the furniture will be moved in at that time. And it will take about one, maybe up to two weeks for each one for delivery and setup of those, of that furniture. Substantial completion of the building is estimated for August 4, so a really good date for us when we're looking at the beginning of school. We need to have that occupancy certificate, as I said, from the city to let teachers really move into the building. We expect that to happen, if it can't happen soon after August 4, it would be mid-August, which again is pretty early when opening up a new building of this size. We have Meet the Teacher Night scheduled for August 27, 5:30 to 7:30. We also need to set up an open house for our staff so that they can go through the building. And we haven't set that date yet, but we plan to do that before school starts. Camp St. Croix has sent out initial information about their school-age care program that will be provided for Rivercrest students. And we have a dedication day, which, the title of that is Designing for the Future, and it's scheduled for Saturday, September, I think 27, from 8 to 2. And there will be activities and events both at the Rivercrest site and at Camp St. Croix. So it will be a fun family day. We hope to start with a race that goes on our trail, around our site, goes through the gateway and into the trails on the campsite as well. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them with help from Sandy and Tim and Barb as well.
Any questions for Kathy or her team? If not, Mary, that's really exciting. It sounds like we're making great progress, and I think we may look forward to that day when we can see the finished product. So, you know, it's really exciting as well that they're on, on target for the completion. We'll move on to board reports, Board of Education Committee assignments. Board members in their packet of materials can see the, each of the committees, the chairs, and the membership. So if you have any questions about that, certainly I can field, field it now, or we can discuss it at a later time. But just briefly, Governance and Policy Committee is chaired by myself. Facilities and Grounds is chaired by Tom Holland. Finance is chaired by Brian Bell, who's also the treasurer. Learning and Program Development chaired by Barb Van Loon, and Personnel and Negotiations chaired by Mark Kaiserzat. So thank you, everyone, for your willingness to serve as chairs of those respective committees. And then also the Governmental Advisory Council, Tom Holland is serving on that. The 2008-09 board meeting dates are also in your board materials. If you have any questions regarding those dates, I think they're pretty much the second Tuesday of each month. There's a few exceptions, either for a work session or annual meeting, or possibly additional meeting that's scheduled during the month. So, but let us know if you have any questions regarding those dates.
I would like to make one comment about that for our community, just to let them know that we will be holding board meetings starting in October at the Rivercrest Multipurpose Room. So we look forward to that. A little smaller space than this auditorium space, and we'll be closer to the people that join us for those meetings.
Good. Thanks, thanks, Mary. Okay, final report is 612 Space for Learning, High School Program Needs. Mary?
And Ed's going to join me up here, and if you would grab a chair as you come on up, Ed, that would help. Certainly Principal Ed Lucas is the... Certainly, Principal Ed Lucas is the authority on program needs in the high school. And I'll get us started and then Ed's going to add much more specific comments. When we think about space for learning, I really think of three different areas that we need to address or think about. Number one is how many seats do we need? How many students do we have? What's our enrollment? What's our projected enrollments? How much classroom space do we need for that? And we've touched on that, certainly with our projections and looking at those to the future and so forth, knowing that the high school has a capacity for 1,680 students. The second area is really our educational program. And how does the space serve our educational program? And along with that would be included our core facilities like our cafeteria or our auditorium. Because when you think of our educational program, certainly that is the work that our staff and our students do within our schools. So that's what we're going to be really focusing on this evening, is that educational program and the needs and concerns that we have in relationship to serving the number of students we have now and the number of students who are projected in the future. And lastly, infrastructure. Certainly that's your heating and ventilating system, it's your energy systems and your plumbing. But we're not really going to touch much on those this evening. That's for another time. All of these three areas interact, so we will have some comments that touch on those beyond the educational program. But just to let you know, that's what we're really going to focus on this evening, is the educational program needs and future program needs in relationship to this space. There's some information in the handout for you about the high school and knowing that it was two original buildings. One was built in the 60s, that's the West Wing, and it was opened as a junior high. And then the second, the East Wing was built in the 70s and it was opened as a new high school. So, you know, the age of the major portion of this building ranges from 33 to 45 essentially years old. They then, in 1975, oops, I already read that, sorry. When the current middle school was then built in 1994, the two buildings and the high school site were joined together. And so that became the new larger high school. And then there was a remodeling that occurred in 1997 that added this auditorium and additional instructional spaces like the biology labs that we have over in the West Wing. As we look at projected increases of enrollment, they certainly require more classroom seats for learning. And then we look at the quality of our space needs that affect the educational program. And when we look at that overall, there's some, three different areas that I think are significantly affected that we need to, that provide challenges for us over time to continue that quality educational program that we have now. First is the limited size of some of the classrooms. Knowing that they were built, you know, in the 60s and the 70s, if we look at the east side classrooms, Ed's told me that they range generally from 700 square feet to 900 square feet. And just to give you a relationship with that, at Rivercrest, one through five, they range about 900 square feet, but they also have the resource rooms. Now, we're thinking of smaller children as opposed to our teenagers who are in the high school, much larger in size. So just, that gives you a reference point. We also look at this space in relationship to instructional flexibility and what kind of instruction is needed. And this, and instruction has changed from the 60s and 70s. Certainly at that time, students stayed in their seats and their desks for a greater portion of their learning time. And when we look at current instruction strategies, that's much different. Certainly the teacher works with the whole class, but they also work with small groups and large groups and individuals and combinations of all of those kind of groups. Sometimes they're working on computers, sometimes they're working at their desk. It's a much more flexible environment and requires more space as a result. If we had the space in this building and we didn't have as many students and really at that capacity level that we have now, we could renovate some of the space and combine spaces so that we would have better learning classrooms that were of adequate size. But really, that's not an option for us at the present time with a four-year high school being housed in this space. Second area is limited access to technology. Certainly, technology is one of the learning tools, a very important learning tool for our students and throughout the high school, many, many areas. We need more accessibility or student accessibility to computers and smart boards and the other technology tools of learning for them. And then another area causing us challenge is equipment modernization. That affects instruction, it affects curriculum and learning and certainly the equipment sometimes takes more room than the space that we currently have. So we can't just renovate it and put in that new equipment. Our science labs are an example of that that Ed's going to talk about soon. So I want to really compliment the high school staff. They have done an outstanding job using this facility and even with the challenges that we have to provide a quality education for our students. But when we look to the future, particularly with the global marketplace, HSD 2025 and continuing to provide that high quality education that we do in Hudson, we really have some additional challenges for us. And so Ed's going to take some time now and talk about some specific areas and highlight some of the challenges that we have with those.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to defend my territory and to revisit and for the new board members to enlighten about our situation here at the, at the high school. I'll start with the first area, generally talking about the classrooms. And I'm not going to go through all of these bulleted items specifically with you. You can read those, but I'll talk in more general terms.
One thing, Ed, I just want to make sure everybody has the updated copy that was at your place. Okay.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank you for, when central offices moved out of the high school, we opened up seven additional classrooms and those have been hugely significant in spreading out our population throughout the high school. It really eliminated some major congestion areas, improved instruction because it took teachers off of carts and put them into the classrooms. And we currently have two part-time teachers who will be on carts for next year. So all of the teachers will have their classrooms for their prep hours and they will all have their classrooms for study halls. But that is pretty much the extent of where we are at with our population. We are maxed out with that. As was mentioned, our classrooms range in size from right around 700 square feet to 900 square feet. And we've done quite a bit of shifting over the years to maximize our space. And at the current time, we are basically out of space. And it's been like that for some time, but as we've had to have been creative, we made room and we were able to, I think we're pretty close to 100% efficiency here with utilizing all of our space. With the variation in different sized classrooms, that really does put a crimp on the teaching style within the classrooms, especially when we get to those smaller sized classrooms that have a capacity of 30 students. And especially with high school students trying to do differentiation and create different activities for the students in those classrooms becomes very difficult. We do not also have a large central meeting place for individual classrooms to gather together. We've, I'll talk a little bit later about restructuring some computer labs, but we did make one space available in the east side where we could possibly take two classes and meet together as a, for a field trip or to have a guest speaker. Our other option is to come down here to the auditorium and use the auditorium for large gatherings. And we often do that for in-house field trips when we have to combine classes together. The study halls are currently held in the classrooms. We cannot use the cafeteria for study halls because we have three driver's ed classes going on there in the morning. And that, that's a large area. It's not the best learning space for the driver's ed classes because we have the cooks preparing lunches for the students in the morning. We have vending machines down there that kick on and off during the day. We have traffic that goes through there as students pass during the day. But we're making use of it and it is working at the present time. The teachers, of course, as I said, have space to prepare for their lessons in their individual classrooms, but we don't have additional space for them to gather if they're going to be working on interdisciplinary projects. We have to try to coordinate that so teachers have prep hours together with it. It doesn't always work. We just don't have the meeting spaces available. Any questions on the general classrooms and the conditions of those rooms?
I just, I just have, what is the standard?
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn it off. Ed, what is the standard size recommended classroom for high school students? I know you mentioned we fall in the 700 and 900 range, but what is the target size?
I don't remember what ATS and R's recommended size was, but it's right around that 900. 900 is on the low end.
Okay.
And especially when you get to your specialized rooms with your science rooms, your physics labs, 900 is very, 900 square feet is very small. Our current science labs are approximately 1,200 square feet and they're small.
Okay. So even those 1,200 square foot rooms, their science labs are marginal for size?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Let me move on to the media center. Generally, the media center, the library for a school of this size is undersized. That's the bottom line on that. We have adjacent to our library, a computer lab and that computer lab is at capacity scheduled, it's full most of the time. The auditorium, you've been here for many of the concerts and the concerts have been packing the auditorium. We are at capacity in this facility and I think that's a testimony to the programs that we have here at the high school. They are very well-known, they're well-attended, but we are, we have been forced in the choir program to go to multiple performances so that we can accommodate all of the parents and all of the programs. And the same will hold true for the, for the middle school as well, when they come up here and present their programs. We are, we are packed. We have three computer labs at the high school. One is in our LMC, our library, and we have one, we will be creating one on another computer lab on the west side of the building this year. And we last year created one on the east side of the building. So we have a total of three of those labs available and they are used extensively throughout the day. Of course, with more technology coming online, there's more and more use. The more, the more we advance and educate our students in the area of technology, the more, more, there's a greater need within the classroom. So we're going to have to look at how we're going to accommodate that in the future. We currently do have what we call cow labs, computer labs on wheels. And they are laptop computers that teachers roll into their classrooms and use those as support technology as well. There is some, those are heavily used as well. There's some management problems with those because we have so many students using those on a regular basis and it requires maintenance to keep those up as well. So they are working, but we could and do need the additional space for computer labs.
Ed, I know you talked to me today about those labs, the portable labs, and that one of the difficulties we talked about was we don't really have any space to store them. The labs, I believe, have 15 stations on each lab?
Each lab, correct.
And so we don't have the storage facilities to really even maintain that kind of technology access.
And that, as we'll address a little bit later with storage space in general, there, we are out of storage space at the high school. The cafeteria, we currently run three lunches in the cafeteria and each of those lunches is at capacity. We cram in over 500 students into the lunchroom and we are very, very fortunate that we have outstanding students here at the high school because we've had minimal problems with behavior issues at, during those lunches. But putting 500 students in is a task and requires quite a bit of supervision. And as we, as the enrollment increases, we're going to have to look at a couple of different options. And one would be to change our schedule and to go to four lunches instead of three lunches. All of these changes that we're going to look at at the high school are going to create domino effects. And when we look at our schedule, we have X number of minutes that we have to maintain for instruction time and those are going to be impacted either by starting earlier or going later if we have to change our lunch periods. The class times are going to be changed as well. And moving in that direction and changing our schedule is a significant change for our high school and takes a tremendous amount of planning to put that in place because that, we have X number of graduation requirements. And when you change that schedule and take an hour out of every day, that is going to impact the graduation requirements. So that, that whole picture for the change of schedule will have to be looked at as it impacts the use of the cafeteria. And as I mentioned earlier, we have, three of the periods are used for driver's ed classes. It takes, one period is used for the lunch itself, fifth hour, which is broken into three parts. And then it does take an hour after lunch to clean the cafeteria. So we're talking about five out of the seven hours of the day for that cafeteria being used. The, we have two gyms. We have an east and a west gym. The east gym is our large gym and that's where we held the graduation ceremony and it was quite warm in the, in the east gym, but we managed to, to move through it. It is not air-conditioned and currently when we, we put our, close to 1,700 students into that gym, it is at capacity. When we have our assemblies in that gym, it's full. And so as enrollment continues to go up, we're going to have to look at options on, on how we bring our students together, our entire student body together. And of course, that does impact the physical education classes that I'll, I will talk about later. Our hallways, many of you have been in our hallways during passing time, they are crowded. We have moved lockers out of the hallways and relocated them into other less-used hallways. But again, we, we've done as much as we possibly can do in that capacity. The east, the, excuse me, the outside hallway is, the sidewalk between the east and the west side is used on a regular basis. Rain, shine, storms, students have to use that because we simply cannot fit everyone into, into our main hallways during passing time. Any additional changes that we would make or additions in terms of classrooms adding on anywhere, of course, would lengthen the amount of time that students would be able to, would travel from one end of the building to the other. And so that, again, is the domino effect. If we create more space on this current site, then passing times are going to be impacted with that as well. And of course, it's just the congestion itself. When we look at students carrying backpacks, and students do need to, to carry those backpacks because we don't have enough locker space. So it's kind of a, it's a no-win situation. We, because students travel so far from one end of the building to the other, it's difficult for them to, to get back and forth. And the schedule just doesn't, because the schedule is random, it's very difficult to put students in one location in the morning and in another location in the afternoon. So the scheduling does impact locker space as well in terms of students do have to carry their books with them from class to class. And the more backpacks we have, the more limited we are in terms of space in the hallways. And of course, it becomes a safety issue as well. When we look at our parking, you know that our parking situation is, is maxed out. We do offer our parking permits to seniors first and then juniors. Sophomores really utilize St. Pat's parking lot. And the additional space across the street, we're thankful for St. Pat's because they are allowing us to do that, but it does create some supervision problems for us. And it also creates problems when St. Pat's would be having a funeral, a wedding or some other gathering during the day that our students then would have to find other places to park. Again, the domino effect, when we talk about emergency or evacuation situ, evacuations within the building, as our enrollment grows, so grows our proceed, our process for evacuation and the challenges that go along with that. We are maxed out at, again, it's with St. Pat's, we utilize the upper level of the church and we do fill it to capacity. They do have the lower level available and we, we use that for overflow, we use that for counselors. We use that for counselors to work with students during those emergency evacuations because students get... Become afraid and need assistance. Our special ed students need assistance during that time and that's where they are located in the lower level. When we look at the physical structure of our building, when people come onto the main... Onto the campus, they think the auditorium is our main entrance and door one actually is our entrance and that is by the east gym. It's difficult to see and the entrance itself creates problems for adults coming into the building and it's difficult to monitor them. We are looking at putting in a separate camera right at the front of the door so that the secretaries can see specifically who is entering the building. And that, of course, leads into the office area, which is small for a building our size and inadequate to handle the adults and students that come into the building because our associate principal's office, which is by door one and the main entrance, is the door that all adults have to check into when they come into the building. So in the morning, as students are checking in and getting makeup slips, the adults are also trying to check in as well to go to other parts of the building. Housed in there are the administrative offices and we've carved out several storage areas, closets, and made them into administrative offices. And we've just taken the last one, which was our conference room, which used to be a storage room for school supplies, and we made that into our conference room. And now with the additional staff that we've added for our guidance counselor, we've made... We've turned that into an office. And currently, the teachers do not have a lunchroom other than some makeshift lunchrooms that we've created. And one of those is the greenhouse, which is on top of the east wing. And it's a nice little place to meet. However, the temperature fluctuates and it can be twenty below during the winter up there too. So... Or a hundred and ten degrees in the spring of the year. We also took a... An old closet, which is adjacent to the janitor's office on the west wing, and converted that into a lunchroom for our teachers. So I would classify those as inadequate spaces for lunchrooms. Our conference room, when we lost our... When we created a separate office this year for our new guidance person, then we took one of the last old offices on the east upper wing and created that into our new conference room. And it's an area of about twelve by eighteen and it's approximately three hundred feet from our main office. So as we have adult parents come in for meetings, we will have to escort them up to that area and that room is located between some classrooms as well, but that's the last available space that we have. This year, with the addition of the new counselor, we've also moved our FYI room and in order to open up a computer lab on the east side, our freshman year initiative classroom was moved to the career center. So it's doubling as a classroom and it's also doubling as a career center. So that space is maximized as well. We struggle with the health area, which is located in the guidance area, behind the guidance offices. We currently have two, three rooms, an office, and two sick rooms back there with a little bathroom to be able to accommodate seventeen hundred students. It is very, very tight and there's a lot of traffic that goes through that individual area. I mentioned the lockers. We have fifteen hundred lockers within the building and seventeen hundred students and nowhere else to put those. One of the issues that we continue to face is when students share lockers. It's a safety issue. It's a possession issue and it does create some problems. With restroom facilities and storage space, restrooms are maxed out. And as I said earlier, we've taken all of our storage space and either converted it into classrooms or offices or lunchrooms and we're out. As we look at the specific content areas with the English rooms, which are located on the west side of the building in the old junior high wing, they are small. They're right around that nine hundred capacity. But as you add the books, the textbooks, the storage shelves, because we have no other storage space for those textbooks and books that are used, it really reduces the size of the classroom and does impact instruction. The same situation exists for math and social studies. And when we add computer technology to that and the limited amount of access to technology, that does impact the classes as well. One of the things that, in terms of team teaching, when teachers are teaching the same subjects and would like to team teach together, bring their classes together, as I said, we really don't have any space to be able to do that other than to come down here and use the auditorium. Sometimes you will see teachers attempting to use the commons, but the commons area is often shared with the FIED classes and they overload into those areas when the... The FIED classes will overload into the commons when those FIED classes are too large and we sometimes have two FIED classes at the same time in the east gym. And then, of course, when classes are going on, we have parents coming in through the building, going into the athletic office, and now we'll have parents traveling through up into our conference room on the east wing. When we look at the area of science, when we talk about the chemistry rooms, we have two chemistry rooms and I would say that the chemistry rooms are adequate at this particular time. We do have to make some modifications and significant improvements in the ventilation as they have certain types of ventilation hoods that they have in the chemistry area and they're very expensive and we're going to have to replace those. They're getting old and we struggle to keep them running. The biology, as I mentioned earlier, they are limited in size and we can... We max out our classes at about twenty-six. That's about how many we can put and have all students participate in lab work when their... When lab is done. We've tried for years to try to figure out a place to put in the AP Biology. We simply can't do it. It takes an extra area for preparation for those experiments and we don't have that space available. And so we are currently holding AP Biology on the books until... And not offering it until we can figure out what we're going to do with it. The equipment in the science area is old. It's outdated and it continually needs to be repaired. Physics is really struggling with the size of their classrooms because they are inadequate for holding experiments. And we are currently in a science revision right now in the curriculum and physics is the area that seems to be very hard hit with that. They want to incorporate new technology with those experiments, but it's very difficult. They just do not have the classroom space available to do that. When we look at world languages, we have had requests to add new languages, but we simply don't have anywhere to put them. No, we can't house them. And our German and Spanish programs are doing very, very well, but we would like to consider additional programs if we have the space to do that. When we look at the area of art, again, we're talking increased number of students in that area and the space is limited. We currently have two classes that are taught at the same time. It's a ceramics class and a jewelry class that share one classroom. It's... The classroom is approximately twelve hundred square feet total. It's a long, narrow classroom, but it's the only place that we can put our pottery wheels and consequently two teachers share at the same time. And they are very good at working together and sharing classes, but when you put almost forty students, forty-five students into one room, it's a challenge to be able to teach under those conditions. And we're looking at... We have done some updating of equipment, but again, some of that equipment is expensive and we simply have no place to put the new equipment if we were to update it. And I think that that impacts when you are overloading the classrooms. It impacts students' desire to take the classes because they know they aren't going to get the personal attention that is so deeply needed with art. We talk about music and theater. We have the orchestra coming up to the high school in a couple of years and we do have one additional band room that both choir and band use it as additional practice areas. It is not a very soundproof room, so we are going to have to look at... Talk to the architects on how we're going to be able to soundproof that so that we can run orchestra concurrently with the choir. Right now, it doesn't work and thank goodness we have... Our teachers are able to work together and they juggle their schedules so that when choir is practicing, we don't have band or practicing going on in the next room because it's very difficult to focus when that happens. As we talk about the expansion of the music program or expansion of the theater program, again, we come back to the auditorium and we have to... We're going to have to limit the number of performances that we have or we're going to have to look... Become creative in how we offer those performances because the facility and practice areas compromise that. As we move on to the business and marketing areas, all of our three business rooms do have computers in them. Two of those rooms are inadequate. They're very small. They hold twenty-four computers and if you walked into those classrooms, you're going to walk into a very congested area. Students are shoulder to shoulder in those rooms. They are maximizing the technology in those areas. The other room is of adequate size. That's a combination computer or combination computer lab, business lab, and our yearbook classroom. So two out of the three are very, very small in size. Our family and consumer ed program is... Our kitchen is... Has been... Was built in the sixties. The equipment is... We are currently looking at updating that equipment in that area. The teachers are becoming very, very creative in designing a classroom and a kitchen that is mobile so they can use it for multi-purpose classes and shift things around, use it in large areas, use the equipment in larger areas as well. But we have to consider safety in that process and the kitchen is really struggling at this particular point. We have one classroom where we can house sewing machines and we also, within that classroom, it serves as a multi-purpose class for other classes as well. The students have to put the sewing machines away, lock them up, and then we bring other classes in. With the family and consumer, in the area of family and consumer, this year we eliminated two of the foods classes because we had a request for nine sections of foods and we have seven hours. So we combined as much as we could. We have a limit of twenty-four students that we can put into each of those classes. So we had about forty-eight students who were not able to take foods classes this year. In the area of FIED, we are maxed in that area as well with the number of teaching stations that we have. We... The FIED teachers work very, very well together. They sit down as a team and they plan out hour by hour who is going to be where in the building. That is the only way that we can schedule the FIED sections. And we are forced to have summer school FIED. It's not only convenient for students, but there's no way that we could take all those additional students who take summer school FIED, put them in during the regular year. We don't have... We physically could not be able to do that. There is no space available. And our FIED department has continually talked with me and discussed with us and with Sandy about the issue of the philosophy of FIED in the curriculum, that FIED should be a year-long physical activity. And we're forced to modify that and change that so students can get their FIED credit during the summer. It does help them with other taking more courses, but on the other hand, we couldn't do it anyway if we had them take FIED during the regular year in our current situation. And of course, if we're going to look at adding additional space for FIED on this campus, as an example, looking at another gym, we would be reducing the amount of green space that we have on campus. Our special ed classrooms, I think we've done an excellent job of arranging and putting our special ed classrooms in areas that are of adequate size and still meeting the needs of our students, but those are smaller areas. We have nowhere to go for any additional programs in terms of creating another special education area. In some of our classrooms in special ed that require life skills and hygiene classes, the structure of the building limits us putting in sinks or other hygiene areas. In the area of tech ed, we have our woods, our metals, our auto shop. We have lab spaces available that have classrooms attached with them. At times, we are using those classrooms at the same time that classes are going on in the shops. So we end up doubling up sometimes depending on how the schedule is laid out. We're looking at moving forward with a pre-engineering program called Project Lead the Way and we're not sure where we're going to put the clean electronics lab at this particular point. It's a great program and we think that we can do it with our drafting room. However, we are going to do some... We would be required to do some hand scheduling. It would displace, probably displace some teachers at some time. And of course, we get to the area of the athletic area of athletics and our facilities are used, I think, quite extensively, used all the time. We have many groups from the outside that are requesting to use the facilities as well and we have to simply tell them no because we have a difficult time lining up the practices and the games with the current facility that we have. There are times where we would like to add lower level teams such as ninth grade teams. We simply don't have the space to do that. We can't accommodate games nor can we accommodate practice facilities. When we look at our Newton Field, we've... Thank goodness for Amy Hamburg, the principal over at EP Rock, has been helpful and worked with us in allowing our football players to use the space that's over there and the visiting teams to use it because the locker rooms are very small for the size of teams that we have. We use temporary portable restroom facilities at all of our outside... All of our athletic facilities because we simply don't have permanent structures. And when we take a look at storage throughout the district, not only for our extracurricular program but for the building as well, we are out of space.
Questions? Thank you, Ed. Board members have questions, comments for Ed?
Not a question. Just, you know, it's striking when listening to you, Ed, and it's a great presentation, thank you. It's just how comprehensive this problem is. I mean, you know, if you were to try to endeavor to say, "How are we going to fix this? What are we going to do?" I mean, you know, it's across the board from common spaces, the classrooms and athletic areas. It's just, I mean, it's a big, as I said, comprehensive problem that, you know, seems somewhat overwhelming. You know, I did think of one question. I jotted a note to myself and I probably should know this, but I don't recall. When we tried doing some zero hour classes, did that have any impact? Did that help?
Very little.
Okay.
The chem... We did it with AP Chemistry and first semester with zero hour worked pretty well, but then we found that as we moved into second semester, it became a drain on the students. The students just wore down by the end of the year. It was a challenge for them, getting up early. Many of those students who took that AP Chem class were also involved in extracurricular, co-curricular activities. So, you know, they were starting here at six fifteen in the morning, but they weren't leaving until ten o'clock at night. And so for those students who take those courses, it is... It's exhausting by the end of the year. We have... We will be offering some zero hour FIED classes this next fall and we're hoping that that's going to have a positive impact on our students because the exercise in the morning then is going to, you know, it's proven that exercise does help students concentrate. But again, we're going... These are students who are highly motivated. They're going to be involved in many activities. They probably will still be here for extracurricular activities and co-curricular after school. So again, I think we've seen the cumulative effect where it wears you down at the end of the year. It just catches up with you and catches up with the students. One of the things that we encourage... One of the things that we incorporated this year was senior release, first and second hour and sixth and seventh hour, and that did relieve some of the congestion. And, but what it also did was it eliminated some students from taking some of the elective courses. They chose to pare back on their schedule, and it did impact their, because they had the required graduation requirements, they chose not to take a band, or they chose not to take choir, they chose not to take an art class. And so we did see some, some impact in reduction in the number, the size of some of those classes. But as far as the congestion is concerned, it did help sixth and seventh hour, but we eat lunch fifth hour, and then the students would leave sixth hour. So those seniors who were leaving sixth or seventh hour, or sixth and seventh, probably had a class fifth hour as well.
Other board members? Brian?
How about online class that we, we do, continuing that next year?
Yes, we have an online class in German next year. We have an online class in American literature. American Lit was the first class that we had this year, and then we got enough students to take the online class in, in German. It's not been popular, and surprisingly, I think students are, they like that social connection of the high school. And I've had questions from parents asking if we had to allow them to take the online course because the parents did not want them to be at home, they would rather have them here at school. So this is a transition period where we are going to have to educate our students about the skills that are necessary for, and the independence necessary to be successful with an online course.
We did, Sandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have strong interest by teachers into an online class that Nancy Toll is teaching for instruction. And did we add an extra section? I know that was like full or something, but really strong interest in that. So we're moving forward, but certainly we have students and parents need to accept the class as well.
We had about 10 teachers who were into, who last summer, I believe it was, were trained to teach an online course.
We're still in a hybrid model, so they still have that social component, right? They still get together every other?
Yes, every other day, right. One of the things that we are changing and adapting in our freshman year initiative class is to educate our students on how to take the online course. We have a couple of components of that where they are actually, it's called EDGILOG, where it's a drug and alcohol program that they are actually taking online. And that will be our first step to help educate them, to get more students involved or familiar with the technology so that they can, hopefully, it will grow and they'll be more interested in taking an online course later on. And of course, all of the work that is, that will be done in our freshman year initiative class, it'll be, will be done on the computers so that we really want to emphasize for our freshmen how important technology is and how beneficial it is and what an asset it will be for them as they become more proficient using it.
Ed, question regarding the capacity. The capacity of the high school is 1,680 students?
Yes.
And if we were at capacity, would the, would the, this high school facility be adequate then? Are, is there a number less than that that would fit, in a sense?
We are extremely tight at 1,680, and I think if we are looking at that capacity of about 1,500, when students are, leave for field trips, that's when we get a sense of what it is like in the building. And several hundred of our students go to the Festival of Nations in the spring of the year. And when those students are gone, you can feel a change in the atmosphere in the building. And we have a couple of hundred students that, that are gone for that. 1,500 would be a comfortable number for this building. But of course, as we look at, you know, the, look at the remodeling of this building, we do need to begin to really seriously think about remodeling those science rooms, those science labs to meet the goals of HSD 2025.
Even with, even if the number were 1,500, we'd need to look at that.
We'd need to look at that, yes.
And I would, we'd actually have to look at if 1,500 would do it with renovation to update the facilities to meet the current instructional strategies and curriculum that we have. I don't, we don't know. It's more about the feel of the building, the 1,500 works, but yet we've identified a number of areas that we need to add technology and make the spaces more flexible to update those programs. And we haven't really looked at, you know, what size the building would be with that. We'd have to have architects come in and study it first.
One of the things that we looked at with, the architect discussed with the possibility of creating another classroom in the science area that had a combination of a little computer lab and an office area, we were thinking about taking that room and creating that into the classroom for the AP biology room. The structure, the structure of the room prohibited that because there was a concrete wall, that was a bearing wall that went down the center of that room. And the cost of taking that wall out, redoing the room and setting it up would have been prohibitive for just one AP class. Financially, it didn't make any sense.
Excuse me, Ed, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, you know, one thing, Tom, I was kind of thinking along the same lines that you are, what, as far as what, you know, the capacity is. And I really kind of have to even question, you know, the capacity of 1,680. I mean, I don't know if some of those numbers were arrived at looking at, you know, instructional areas only, but clearly, the common areas of this building are woefully inadequate. I mean, if you've been here, and I'm sure you probably have during their passing, it's just remarkable. And I think the idea that they have to go out on the sidewalk is ridiculous. I mean, in this, in this climate, and it's just, and for security, it just shouldn't have to happen, but I think it has to. So I don't even know, I mean, saying right capacity, I think, is kind of understating the problem.
What I'm interpreting or understanding from the comments is, is that 1,500 would be, is a comfort level for capacity, but it doesn't address the need for renovation for futuristic educational needs, so that's, and current.
Tom, do you have a place to put those 200 students?
Well, Tom Kranz is here, maybe there's space at camp.
Thanks, Ed, for the thorough report. And, you know, as I, as I look at this and I think about, you know, the different phases that this school has gone through, you know, when it was separate buildings, that, you know, we added the, the bridge or the, between the two schools, and we added the science wing onto it, music, tech ed, expanding the cafeteria. I mean, we've really gotten a lot of good use out of this building. I don't think there's any question that, you know, we haven't, that we've not only used the building, but we've been creative, you know, with the use of the space. And, you know, I certainly want to thank you and your staff, and, you know, I think that goes to all of our schools, including the elementary schools, and some of the challenges that they've had until we've been able to bring Rivercrest online. So space is the issue in this community and in the school district. So I know you and your team, and Mary and her team have been working hard to try to figure out, you know, some solutions to this, and we'll continue to do that because we're, you know, committed to making sure that our students receive the best education. The one, the one thing that bothers me, I'll have to admit, is, you know, in going through this and, for example, seeing that we can't offer the AP biology, you know, we're limited with, with the world language instruction, especially in light of HSD 2025 and the things that we want to do. We have the orchestra program, you know, that's expanding and coming up through the grades, and we, we have a lot of things and goals that we want to achieve in the school district that, you know, are being somewhat compromised just because we're not able to, I mean, we're trying hard, we're, we're going to try to make it happen, but, you know, there's limits to what we can do. So again, I applaud you for what you've been able to do thus far. I also want to thank St. Patrick's Church for, you know, they've been a great partner with us in, in offering, you know, car parking, and I know with, when we've had emergencies and evacuations, they've had an open door for us over there. So, you know, certainly, we need to appreciate the help that they've been able to provide us. Thank you.
Dan, I have a question, if I could just ask Ed for his opinion on it. You know, I, looking through this here, I see a lot of the issues with regard to technology and computer labs, et cetera. And, you know, I'm kind of wondering as we, as we go forward, and part of it, quite frank, is just seeing my son, who's now in college, who is chained to his laptop, and that seems to be a really good curriculum delivery model. You know, I don't know, and I think, I think across the river, they, experimenting with that, issuing laptops, and, and it's expensive, obviously, but, you know, it could, it could be a really, I think, advantageous curriculum delivery model. Question is, what, I mean, how would you, I guess, assess the, I mean, is the maturity level of the, of the high school group, is that, is that, would that work well, do you think, as, as, as an option? Something to look at?
Well, I think we have different maturity levels.
Okay.
You know, we, we have, actually, as our science is going through the curriculum review, we are looking at some models where students will use laptops in their class, and it'll be a good pilot project to see how it's going to work. But we're talking about responsibility, we're talking about students being able to take care of $700-plus pieces of equipment. And some will be able to do that, others will not be able to. I wouldn't incorporate it nine through 12 immediately. I think we would have to look at individual classes and the types of classes, types of students that we have in those classes in using that type of equipment. I think it'll be a good experiment, a good pilot project as we move forward in, in science to see how that works. One of our teachers, Brian Petermeyer, has completely revamped his course so that he is going paperless. And I think that's a great program that he's starting. He started it this year, and next year he will be implementing at 100%, and he's pretty excited about it. And it'll give us a good, a good look to see how that will work.
Indeed.
But I think it is possible in some classes and with some students, but not across the board at this time. We need more education, and we need a better transition program if we're going to move in that direction.
Okay.
I'd like to just add to, Ed and I both serve on the District Technology Council as well, and that is one of the conversations at the Technology Council, but again, we want to move very slowly and be planful on how we want to incorporate and move forward with one-to-one computing within the district. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ed. I think, well...
I want to add a couple things at the end here. Certainly spent time this evening to talk about program concerns at the high school. And again, as Dan pointed out, the high school staff has been doing an excellent job of making, maximizing this facility. But we're really at that max point, and we are committed to continuing to use this building well into the future. And that will be part of the options that we look at, how to use this building and also provide additional space for learning. So that's something that is our challenge as we move forward, and certainly our community as well, for us to get feedback on that. But again, the building, renovation can occur in the building, we can update things, we can combine rooms and so forth, but we have to look at how we can use this space in a more modernized way than we, we currently are as we look towards the future. Next month, we will be looking at the middle school as far as educational programming there and any concerns that we have. So we'll be doing the same thing, analyzing the middle school for you. And then one thing that, Ed, we will be bringing back to you is the number of classes for this fall that we have that are over the class size guidelines, so that you'll have that information as well.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Again, thanks, Ed, for that report.
Thank you. One last thing, if you get a chance before you leave tonight, if you could take a walk over to the east wing and take a look at the courtyard area that the student leadership team has been working diligently on this spring, they have created an outdoor classroom, and it will be completely sustainable. And they'll, future student leadership teams will also be working on bringing technology into that area so that it can be really used as a classroom, and it is a multi-purpose area. So it was one of the last spaces that we had in the building that was totally useless, and they really have, and it has been the students, 100% of the students, with just a little bit of guidance from myself and Hedberg Landscaping and Contracting, who donated many, many hours to teach the students how to create this garden area and courtyard area. They truly have done a wonderful job with it. So if you get a moment, stop in and check it out. They'll, they'll be putting the plants in tomorrow.
Okay, thanks again, Ed.
Thank you.
We'll move on to topics for action, and I think at this point, okay, Tom doesn't need to leave us quite yet. We'll do the consent items, and I'll entertain a motion for approval of those.
Move to approve the consent items?
And do you want to give us the expenditures amount as well? Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me. Okay, we have a motion for approval of the consent items. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved.
At this point, I'll, I'll step out for the next two items.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Wait a couple minutes here until Tom steps out. Okay, topics for action, item B is expenditures. Brian?
Mr. President, move to approve the financial services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,975,759.75.
Okay, we have a motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Barb. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. And we'll move on to item C, Rivercrest Facility Utilization Agreement with YMCA of Greater St. Paul, Camp St. Croix. I believe we've reviewed this agreement previously, or you've described the agreement to us in the past, Tim, so do you want to brief that?
Sure.
Take over that again?
Okay. It's, it will be the agreement that's loose leaf, not in your packet, and this has been, like Dan said, has been reviewed by the Finance Committee. We made a couple of minor changes to it, and really related to the cleanup and supervision of rooms, defining that a little bit more on whose responsibility it is to do certain tasks. And also, under the supervision, a little bit of language change there, really, it's YMCA's program, so just making sure that the languages flows correctly in that area. But the, if you turn to page two, or, yes, page two of the agreement, you can see that under usage of facilities, it describes the area that will be utilized by YMCA. It's approximately 2,825 square feet. And it talks at 1.3 about the time periods for the operation of the school age care. And then section two talks about mutual use. The YMCA, YMCA will also allow us to use Camp St. Croix facilities. And incidentally, Tom Kranz from the Camp St. Croix is here, so if you have any specific questions for Tom, he would welcome those as well. And I won't go into a lot, a lot more detail, but the other sections are pretty much standard verbiage for insurance and liability, and it talks a little bit about transportation and different responsibilities for the program, so.
Okay, any questions for Tim? I believe our legal counsel has reviewed this as well, so...
That is correct. Legal counsel has reviewed it.
And I'm taking it, Tom, you've had sufficient opportunity to review this, and it meets your approval? He's indicating yes. So with that, I'll...
Mr. President, move to approve the Rivercrest Facility Utilization Agreement with the YMCA of Greater St. Paul, Camp St. Croix.
We have a motion from Brian.
Second.
Second from Lynn. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions approved. Thank you, Tim. And we'll get Tom back into the discussion here. While we're waiting for Tom, the next item is 11D, I believe that would be ratification of the 07-09 custodial contract that Tim's gonna go over.
I'm just gonna note that on the agreement that you just approved, we will obviously be filling in the dates in the first sentence on that agreement.
be filling in the dates in the first sentence on that agreement.
Okay, we'll move on with Tim giving us a report on the custodial contract.
Okay, thank you. On page, page...
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thank you. Twenty-three is the master agreement between the school district and the West Central Education Association Custodial Unit for the school district. And I'll just go through a few of the major items of the agreement. And that would include in year, in year one, if you turn towards the back of that contract to page either 21 or 44, it gives the wage schedule. And that, for the most part, is a 45 cent across-the-board adjustment for each one of those cells and each one of those steps. And that's for years, years one and two, and that amounts to about a 2.7, anywhere from 2.7 to 3.8% increase on wages. We did, however, looking at head, the high school and middle school head custodians, we felt to be competitive and comparable to our other districts to look at a shift or an additional premium for those positions because of the number of people they supervise and the number of activities that they have supervision over for their staff. So those folks had an additional 50 cents. And on page 13, or 12 and 13, actually, and those are the, the top numbers, or 35 and 36, you will see language in the contract regarding health insurance. And this language replicates, this is the same language essentially as what is in the teacher's contract. So what it does is it put caps on the district amount that the district will contribute and then has a workout clause if the insurance premiums go above a certain dollar amount. So, and I, I guess we had some, some additional language changes, fairly minor in nature. I won't go through all of those. If you're interested, you can certainly contact me and I can go through it individually with you if you'd like, so at that point.
Tim, just a quick, you had said at the high school, middle school was 50 cents? Is that 50 cents instead of the 45 cent adjustment?
That, that would be in addition.
In addition to the 45, okay. Any questions for Tim, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of this contract.
Mr. President, move to approve the 2007 through 2009 custodial contract.
A motion by Brian, second.
I'll second.
By Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motions approved. Thank you, Tim. We'll move on to the committee reports, personnel, Mark?
Yes, Dan, the Personnel Committee met May 21st and discussed the new job specifications for the Athletic Activities Director, recruitment and selection process. And then we had a closed session for discussion of employee compensation of same.
Okay, thank you, Mark. We'll move on to Facilities and Grounds. Tom, do you have a report?
Right. On May 28th, the Facilities and Grounds Committee met and one of the topics for discussion that evening was the review of the Committee Commission, which is found on, as agenda item 12B on page 47, for your review, just a, a listing of the functions and purpose of the committee. In addition to that, we heard, as you've heard tonight, the Rivercrest Elementary School update with a lot of enthusiasm in that and pride. We talked about the planning for the upcoming year 08-09 in terms of projects and so forth that we are considering over the course of that, that fiscal year, as well as the summer projects. And our last item, well, actually not the last item, but the 12, six to 12 space learning we heard from tonight as well. And finally, we did have some discussion around energy management planning and the idea of, of researching firms to look at the efficiencies in our facilities for potential cost savings and so forth. So that was the report.
All right, well, it's a full agenda. Brian, finance?
The first in meeting of the new Finance Committee with Barb and yourself, Dan and me, lots of items we covered. I'll just hit the high points. So one is talking about how we can reduce our, our spend by taking advantage of the lower bond interest rates right now. And that's something that will be coming back with you in July, I think it is. And we got a briefing from Tim on changes in the Administrative Service Center, specifically around doing paperless payroll. So instead of setting out the stubs, it's a little bit of a, a little bit of a new experience for many, many members of the district, but probably one that will save us a little bit of money, also allows us to scale and also probably provide a little bit more kind of custom, custom information for people. So it's probably a good thing, but I'm sure it's gonna be a few, a few changes in, in how people do things, but I think it will work out well, so. But it's good to see and it's certainly an area that we can continue to drive efficiencies and is how we run our business, so. So it's nice to see Mary and Tim and team tackling that. Talked about school age care budget, talked a little bit about our draft, our budget goals, which we'll be talking more about in the board meetings to come. And finally, just talked about financing capital budgets and kind of the plan for that. So that was it.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Any questions for those chairs of those respective committees? If not, again, thanks for the committee work that's been done. We, I don't believe we have any requests to speak, and we do have an item for closed session. I would like to just, as we've wound down the school year, I'd like to thank all of the administration, Mary and her team, and all the staff and faculty and everyone out in our schools that have worked hard over the year and certainly appreciate it. I know Ed's graduation went off without any problems and so appreciate your efforts with that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent F, for the purpose of preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems and investigation of charges against an employee.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Bell, aye.
Trinohoy, aye.
Kaiser, aye.
Van Loonan, aye.
Okay, thank you, motions approved.